Ladies and gentlemen, please rise for the pleasure of the agents as we open our meeting for the Alderman.
Ladies and gentlemen, please rise for the pleasure of the agents as we open our meeting for the Alderman.
The United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Alderman King, Alderman Stowe, Alderman Tripp, Alderman Bacaro.
Here.
Alderman De Setti.
Here.
Alderman Filippo.
Here.
Alderman Dempsey, Alderman Dislydis, Alderman Yaman.
Here.
Alderman Rivers.
Here.
Alderman O'Brien.
Here.
Alderman Schewer.
Here.
Alderman Blackwell, Alderman Deliva.
Here. I declare a quorum. Consideration of previous minutes.
Motion to accept.
Seconded by Mr. Yaman. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried. Public session. Would anyone from the pub...
Yes.
Also, we have special minutes from a meeting on March 14th.
I'd like to motion to accept those as well, I'm sorry.
Seconded by Mr. Schewer. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, ma'am clerk. Public session. Anyone from the public wish to speak? I'd like to limit our comments to three minutes, please. Would anyone from the public wish to speak? Yes, ma'am, please come forward. State your name, please. Your address.
Mary Ann Sliatak, part of the estate of Katnir Matowski. I spoke last month. We have sixteen plus acres of underdelic land at 135 Hill Street. And I was wondering what is the response to our request to reconsider applying for an open space grant to that program?
Ma'am, thank you. You've been here in the past. We have a lot of properties for open space that people would like to see the city purchase, but, you know, at this point, we can't really deal with this at this point in time tonight.
We came in about three years ago with our first request. And I know what property we went through, but we have the request in. And right now, there was supposed to be a possibility of evolving the endorsement, because Ansonia considered that this is a city, so they can get seventy-five percent currently while funds are still available. And it's at a very affordable price. And because there was a concerted effort, joint effort with neighborhood and the town administration at that time, against our fifteen year old proposal. That was over ten years ago.
I recall that, because you spoke in front of this board several times.
Yes.
Several times.
I have. So if that's the official response?
At this point, it is yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Oh, I did give out a handout here on how our land does fit. That's Ansonia's latest decision revised. They have significant changes. This building, that was one of the, considering a very significant, sensitive land worthy of preservation. It satisfies particularly any slope in excess of twenty-five percent in terms of development. So this is your own strategic plan that's in place until it gets replaced in two thousand and ten.
I understand that we're in the middle of our budget process as well, so it's gonna be hard to make a commitment to buy this land at this point in time.
Well, the next application will be next year in March. We just missed it. But I wanted to know if we were on the list, included or being considered or anything? Because it's at a very affordable price now.
Alright, thank you very much. Anyone from the public wish to speak? Yes. Name and address, please.
Good evening. Tara Brass on Seventy-Six Garden Street. Just wanted to talk and speak with you a little bit. I know you're going through the budget process right now, which is going to be a tough one. I saw a message coming out with regard, I know there's some contention with Board of Education right now. I just hope that the Alderman will keep in mind the importance of education to the future of our city as we go through this budget process and how important that is. I also wanted to bring up a matter which I saw with a point of contention from City Hall, which was that there was a no big contract that went out by the Board of Education, in that there was some disagreement with that approach, and during the fact that budget is so tight, whether or not the city had the intention to go out today finally with our garbage contract, which is still under a no big contract two years rolling. And that was my comment.
Thank you. Anyone from the public wish to speak? Yes, please come forward, Mr. Mazanti, and give us your address.
Hey there. My name is Edward McGee, Twenty-One Castle Avenue. I got a suggestion from Chippy's Donnie Frank. They can't work nice here. This way you won't tie up none of their truck, none of their business. They're Chippy's Frank's Pizza Place, Factory High Class Place. Okay? And then, there were two. Wickley, Cliffton Avenue and First Drive, a year ago. They were supposed to put up, "Do Not Enter," because it went to the state. The state sent the city a letter on that island there, "Do Not Enter," because it was enacted there a year and a half ago there, "Do Not Enter." And up on Clifton Avenue, Clifton and Water Street, there was a walkway there. And the walkway there, the poles were knocked down. And they replaced that right up on the top there at Water and Clifton, they're right around the corner.
Thank you. Mr. Blesso, did you get that? Thank you.
Okay. Well, it took four years to get the new lights required. That, you know, it took four years for that, and then it'll take another four years to get the new walkway. The poles are there, the lights are all gone, but they have them switched there and there.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Mazanti, one second, please. Mayor.
Mr. Mazanti, I would like to present to you the first City of Ansonia's Ears and Eyes Award. This certificate is awarded to you this date. Mr. Mazanti, on a daily basis, systematically, brings city issues to my attention. I want to give you this award.
Thank you, Mayor. Anyone else from the public wish to speak? Anyone else? Yes. Please come forward, ma'am. Name and address for the record.
My name is Pat Homel, Forum Red Hand Drive, Ansonia. And tonight I want to address the Board, President, Mr. Mayor, Betty, Corporation Council, the reunion, and all gentlemen, and all of our guests. I represent the National Day of Prayer, along with my husband Larry, Frank Brancato, and Tony Brancato, and we'll miss him one. But anyway, we just wanted to, first of all, say thank you to the City Council, the Mayor, and all for the great job you're doing. You really see the difference, and we really appreciate it. Thank you very much. And right now, I would like to just mention, again, we're back again for the National Day of Prayer. This is the sixty-seventh National Day of Prayer in the USA. And we've been doing it here in Ansonia for about six years, anyway. And we'd like to thank you for the privilege of everyone who has been so accounted, you know, we really appreciate your heart. It's a lot to have your support. So we will be holding it on the May third. And it will be here at Veterans Memorial from six to seven thirty P.M. And if the weather is not agreeable, then we have granted permission to use the Armory. So we really welcome everyone to join us, because this is something that is a privilege that we have as citizens of the United States. It's not something that we can just hear locally, but it is nationally. And every city in the nation strives to have a prayer event on that day. The reason for this is that we actually need to come before the Lord. Our presidents, all, you know, right from Washington to President Truman, and more recently, we've signed the law against Reagan in nineteen eighty-eight, which was designated that each year, first group, and then the five, the third, the National Day of Prayer, that we could come together and seek the Lord. The governor of each state issued a proclamation to the firm aforementioned, and is ready at each prayer gathering. We have been blessed to have our honorable mayor read our governor's proclamation for the past four years. So thank you, sir, and we are proud to have been able to coordinate prayer events in Connecticut in each town for the past eight years. So we're quite glad for that. So the important part that I wanted to bring to your attention, especially to those who are new to the Lord and may have not known this, is that we, as the National Day of Prayer, people of faith, any faith, okay, could gather as they wish without government interference to pray publicly for our nation. This is a huge freedom that we must exercise if we want to keep it. For us, this is the Judeo-Christian expression of the National Day of Prayer, which means that we believe the entire Bible is the inherent word of God. And Jesus was Jewish, the disciples were all Jewish, and our forefathers based their faith on the Old English script and scripture of the life. So that's why we refer to it as the Judeo-Christian expression of the National Day of Prayer.
Excuse me, I'm gonna have to have you... We try to limit our comments to like three minutes?
Sure, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and so basically, this year, our expression, our intention is going to be unimiting in America. And so we would invite everyone to join us, and we appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We will have locations available.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the public wish to speak? Yes, please come forward. Name and address for the record.
Mary Ann Houston, Steve Arndt, there it is. I want to question the resolution that was passed, I think it was a resolution, to eliminate the secretaries of various boards that were eliminated. I am, I was a secretary of two of the commissions. I'm not here necessarily fighting for my positions, ma'am. But I don't feel that this decision to eliminate the secretaries to save an ex amount of thousands of dollars for the city was thought out and full. The commissions don't, all the commissions that were eliminated do not have an in-house secretary. So what's happened now is those folks that have volunteered to work for the city on a volunteer basis are now being asked to take on a position or a role that had been paid for in the past. And speaking from a secretary's point of view, I'm not sure that the public was going to get the information that they had been receiving through the minutes that are always posted on the city website. At this point, I understand that all that's going to be turned in is the motions that are passed. And sometimes, some of the boards don't even pass motions in their meetings. There's just discussion about where they're going next and what's been happening, et cetera, et cetera. So I feel the city, the population, the voters are being shortchanged with not having these secretaries on board. If you thought the pays were too high, then maybe equalize them or create levels of how they should be paid, which ones are more not responsible. But for instance, Board of Alderman, I would never want that job. You know, and other various boards. Some of the other boards are a little less complicated and requiring so much paperwork that the job payment could be by levels. And I just don't feel that the city voters and taxpayers are not being represented properly, represented, you know, secretaries in these positions.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public wish to speak? Anyone else from the public wish to speak? Hearing's ended, public session's closed. Another official session, Mayor De Setti.
Good evening, President Bacaro, members of the Board of Alderman, residents of the great city of Ansonia. I know it seems like it's taken a long time for spring weather to arrive, but I want to let you know that Ansonia is moving in fast forward. Thanks to the swift actions of my administration, and this board in particular, Sixty-Five Main Street, the site of our new police station and government office building, is now owned by the City of Ansonia. My ED staff will fill you in on the next steps, but the remodeling and renovation process will begin soon. I want everyone to know that the parking lot is open, and we are poised for a monumental boost in activity in our downtown next year. We are moving full steam ahead, and again, thank you to this board and our residents for their patience. I am proud of the way everyone handled a complicated and delicate situation. Please be aware that the Main Street parking lot is available to be used by all of our surrounding businesses, including Shaw Development, for their current and planned residential and commercial development. Down low is for the businesses, for visitors, for residents, everyone, including Shaw, will have the opportunity to use it. We are awaiting the May opening of the Ace Cosmetology and Barber Salon on East Main Street. So if you don't recognize me now, I'm growing my hair out, as well as a beard and a mustache, so I can test out the new skills by the students, not really. But I'm one of the first customers. Drinks Unlimited and Nini's Salsa are two new additions to our list of products made right here at Ansonia. If you haven't tried the salsa, you should. It's fantastic. Our Drinks Unlimited Company, makers of soda products, people are looking at a location which I have for them, and they're expanding their business, and they are bringing twenty-five new employees to open up a potential brewery. Crave is working hard on their new patio in time for the warmer weather, and Massimino's across the street is really coming along. Wickley Avenue has started. J.I. Palucci has begun laying pipes. The official start date was April second. Unfortunately, the weather has not been too cooperative, but they are moving along. You will hear more about the Prindle Avenue project also via ED. We have a committee selected for charter revision. I want our residents to know that we are always looking for new ways and new perspectives to make government run smoother and save taxpayers time and money. There will be more to report in the coming months. Finally, I wish to thank Finance, Bo, and this Board of Alderman. Good luck as you continue to work on our budget. Thank you to Rich, Monsieur, and the Finance team for all their hard work. I want to urge you to consider all of our taxpayers when deliberating on the budget. Remember, without our taxpayers, we wouldn't be here. The budget is in its earliest stages. There are a lot of information needed before we can make decisions on the Board of Education and all of our departments. One thing is for certain, I will not place more of a tax burden on my residents. On the topic of saving money for our taxpayers, we continue to move towards regionalization. Our committee members' nominations are on your agenda, and we will begin to meet with Derby and Shelter Committee's members to discuss ways to save money with possible consolidations. We did meet with Mayor Zeiken and others from Derby to look at Arca Building last week and the possibility of joining our senior centers. This will have significant savings if we move forward with the consolidation, and if both groups agree. Thank you again to Alderman Yaman and the board, and this board, for their efforts and willingness to move regionalization along. I have always supported these efforts and believe this is the way to relieve our residents' tax burden. I want to recognize Alderman Josh Schewer. This is becoming a monthly habit now. Not only did he win the second annual assumption school free throw competition for men ages thirty to forty-nine, but his son Max became state champion in the free throw final basketball sponsored by Knights of Columbus. Congratulations to Josh and Max. Let's have a look. Josh, I understand that you have challenged a member of my staff for a free throwing competition.
That is correct.
I wish you good luck, and believe it, you'll need it. You know, I was asked to say that. But I'll update everyone on the results of that competition.
It's not gonna be live?
Yes. Finally, I just want to let you know that I started an aggressive road paving project. I want to let the residents know the streets that I plan on paving, and this list will be added to, because I'm working up the numbers now. We will be doing a million and paving job on Lester Street, Jarvis Drive, Clifford Drive, Nancy Road, Third Street, Chestnut Street, Mary Street, South Cliff Street, Scenic View, Burton Street, Clifton Avenue, and Tremont Street. There are gonna be some more streets that I'm looking at. I'm putting some final numbers together, such as Howard Avenue from Jackson to Clifton. Clifton Avenue's in rough shape, but I want to take care of Howard Avenue. That's a long stretch, but I'm working on that. Finally, I want to again recognize the efforts of Jeff Coppola. He has stepped up to the plate, been taking over responsibilities at our senior center. He pitched in without any hesitation. He is helping with the possible merger of our senior center. He also presents new ideas and enthusiasm and excitement, causing measures. I especially want to thank him for his help. Thank you, Jeff. And let me tell you, he does it with a smile. Thank you all, and God bless you, and God bless the City of Ansonia.
Are there any questions for the mayor from the Alderman? Thank you. Corporation Council, Mr. Marini.
President Bacaro, members of the board. First want to touch on the question about Winter Brothers that was brought up in the public session. Pursuant to the charter, Winter's Brothers' failure to perform allowed the city to enter into a contract without the usual bidding process with the current trash hauler. The reason that the city has not gone out to bid yet for the remainder of the contract is, as far as I can say, for the record, to protect the interests of the City of Ansonia, giving the pending litigation with Winter's Brothers. But the charter did allow that selection to go forward without bidding. I would like to thank everybody that attended the Freedom of Information workshop that we had last night in this chamber. So I think it was very instructive. We had guest speaker Tom Hennick, who's Public Education Officer from the State FOI Commission. I hope we all learned a lot and got a good refresher. And for anybody that missed it, whether they be city officials or residents, the full presentation is right now on the city Facebook page, thanks to the stream that was done by the Valley Independent Sentinel last night. As the mayor stated, Sixty-Five Main Street is now in the possession of the City of Ansonia. And that, of course, is thanks to the action of this board to move forward. The next development that we have on the horizon is, of course, the ATP and Palmer Building. And I am pleased to report that negotiations with Copper City seem to be reaching a conclusion, and we hope to have a finalized contract by late this month. We're also working on an agreement, and this is pretty important, on extra public parking at the Valley Baptist Church. And that is the church, of course, on Main Street, that's immediately across on East Main Street, direction to the new salon, the location of the new salon, and of course, Banco's. And we're hoping to make this a quasi-public lot, so that while the church will maintain control of it on certain days when they need it, the public will be able to park. And that's gonna help the residents tremendously, and it's gonna, of course, help the flow of business traffic during the weekdays especially. We want to give a big recognition this month to our blight department. As we know, we have a very active blight department and a very active anti-blight initiative, with a program brought in over three hundred thousand dollars this month alone. And I want to commend the project, the work of the union, the work of Henderson, you know, working very hard, not only at helping clean up the city, but also to make sure that we're capturing really the lean money that represents really the harm to the city and the residents that blight brings to the neighborhoods. But of course, the key to the blight program is remediation and to making the city clean and safe. And towards that end, I want to point out that we do have a cleanup day, and there's gonna be a big presence from our Stomp Light Program. That's Saturday, April twenty-first at nine A.M. So that's a Saturday morning, and it's gonna end with pizza. We hope that members of the Board of Alderman, any other city officials, and of course, residents, could join us on that day, and we will be continuing to promote that through Facebook and online. Last cleanup day worked very nice. I've got a resident make a wonderful suggestion, and I want to bring this to the board. Noreen De Sousis, who's had some excellent experience in the community with food drives and raising awareness and also support for the needy in the community, has brought up the idea of a food bank coordinated and run by the City of Ansonia. And I want to bring this to the Board of Alderman, and hopefully, we could have a subcommittee established to look into this idea a little further. This would be of particular use around the holiday season, so looking forward to Thanksgiving and of course, Christmas, something that we could perhaps put in place by then. And of course, Noreen would be happy to share her ideas and experience with the group. And finally, last week, last month, we discussed opioid litigation. There are a handful, a little more than that maybe now, of Connecticut towns that have been commencing litigation against the manufacturers and distributors of opioids. There's allegations that these distributors and manufacturers have not been working in good faith, and there's a concern that the damage that the opioid epidemic has caused in these communities can be attributable to the actions they've taken. So the mayor's office and I have coordinated an interview process of several firms, small group of firms that are handling these cases. And after talking to several of them, we've selected the firm of Ventura Law out of Danbury as a firm that we feel is best suited to represent the City of Ansonia. As for full disclosure, I actually did work with Ventura Law as a trial attorney five years ago. But they do have measurable experience in large action cases. They coordinated the BP cases, the oil spill cases, and they do have some local ties to our community. And I want to invite up to address questions and to give a little bit of a presentation on this Attorney Kelly Fitzpatrick from Ventura Law.
Thank you very much for that introduction, and thank you to the city for having me tonight. I'm actually from, I don't know, I get it from the valley, so this is really near and dear to me. And I'm honored to be back in the community, and hopeful that we can help the city. So I guess what I'll start out with is discussing what, how did we get here? How did this opioid crisis even come to be? So what happened here is the manufacturer really over-promoted opioids to the public, to the physicians that were prescribing it, claiming that it was not addictive if taken properly, and it really, it really underrepresented the long-term effects of it. So it wasn't really indicated for long-term use in chronic pain, that it was promoted extensively for that type of use. So I'm just gonna talk a little bit about some specifics, because I think it's helpful, background information for you to understand how we got here. As I mentioned, opioids are primarily reserved as a last resort for chronic pain and cancer patients, sometimes related. So we've never approved for long-term use in chronic pain. Purdue Pharmaceuticals, which is actually located here in... Purdue Pharmaceuticals, which is actually located here in Stanford, envisioned a bigger market and they launched a massive aggressive marketing campaign to market OxyContin for long-term use. The other manufacturers, there are several names in the lawsuits and we plan on naming all of them, follow up. And so from 1996 to 2002, Purdue made double the sales force in distributed coupons. Doctors could let patients try 30-day free supply of these highly addictive drugs. The prescriptions issued for OxyContin in the U.S. increased nearly tenfold from 1996 to 2002, from 670,000 prescriptions a year to more than 6 million a year. The sales of OxyContin grew from 48 million in 1996 to almost 1.1 billion in 2000. And so how did they make these misrepresentations? The manufacturers cited biased medical studies to support their claims that opioid addiction was rare, but none of the studies actually involved OxyContin. And contrary to 100 years of prior research stating otherwise. They also hired pain management experts and doctors to promote the use of opioids to other doctors in exchange for kickbacks. And actually, this happened locally. This company called Insys did this specifically in Derby. They hosted sham doctor programs, so, and that's all public information. They also created medical front groups to publish and promote false research and information about the drugs. Senator McCaskill just launched an investigation into this issue of court, pretty astounding the financial ties that the pharmaceutical companies have with the medical practices. They also released unbranded ad messaging, which is ads that don't mean the brand of the opioids, so the main OxyContin. And the reason why they do that is to skirt FDA per. And so how did this affect us in the state of Connecticut? In the state of Connecticut, between 2012 and 2015, Connecticut rose from 15th and immediately overdosed deaths to 12th and 18th. In 2015, drug overdoses filled an average two people per day in Connecticut, higher than the state's 300-year-old deaths. The CDC reported in 2014 that there are approximately, this is crazy, between 72 and 82 opioid prescriptions written, per 100 people were in Connecticut. In 2015 alone, over 2 million opioid prescriptions were filled in Connecticut. And in August of 2017, the Connecticut Office of the Chief Medical Examiner projected that the number of drug overdose deaths in Connecticut in 2017 would be over 1,000. And they were right, it was, I believe it was 4,000 last year. Our medical examiner's office here in Connecticut is actually facing loss of accreditation because they are not able to handle the number of overdose, opioid overdose-related deaths. So it's really a huge problem. In Connecticut, there were more than, there was a 25% increase in opioid overdose deaths from 2013 to 2015. I know you can't see my PowerPoint, but I have a map here where one of the war problem I just want to mention one thing because not every firm is focusing on this issue. I think it's really important. There's something called neonatal abstinence syndrome and what happens is babies are born addicted to opioids when pregnant women take opioids during their pregnancy. And this is a really big problem in Connecticut. The number of NAS-dependent babies born here has more than doubled from 2003 to 2014. The cost of a baby being born with NAS averages $66,000 compared with the health insurance which is about $3,500. And how does this involve the city? The cities will uncertainly bear the future social and economic costs. There's going to be greater need for additional education programs, IEPs, early intervention for special education services. I have a number of friends here who are educators. They believe Narcan needs to be readily available to them. It increases the number of mental health counselors, training of those counselors, student support services, things like that. So that's really going to be a big chunk of future damages that our cities and towns are going to need to be equipped to handle. And so what are the next steps? What we will do is we will meet with the city to figure out what the past damages look like and project the future damages, try to figure out what the future cost will be to abate the problem that the manufacturers and distributors cause in our communities. So that's step one. Step two would be to meet with the city and make a recommendation as far as whether to file suit. And my firm is local, as Trane Marini mentioned. We have offices in Danbury, Bridgeport. We're very proud to be representing cities in this litigation because it's definitely plagued our communities and I'm sure everybody has, knows somebody that has fallen victim to the opioid crisis and we hope to be helpful to them.
Thank you. Any questions from Mr. Patrick? Go ahead, Joe.
Yeah. In terms of specific defendants, are you looking at specific defendants here in Connecticut or do you trace the distribution and manufacturing back to the specific?
So what's, we will look, we'll try to get the data from the, the distributors have to register with the DEA. So we have to look and see, you know, which distributors have a presence locally. It's usually Carvinyl, Mecasson, and, Carvinyl, Mecasson, and...
Purdue.
No, that's the manufacturer. I'm missing, that's the big three distributors. It's Carvinyl, Mecasson, and Malacca. And then the distributor, or the manufacturers are separate. So what we'll do is we'll look and see what activity the manufacturers have had here and then we'll separately look towards the distributors.
And how do you differentiate between the theories by which you proceed against either a manufacturer or distributor? In other words, are you focused on the unbranded advertising and who paid for that in terms of the manufacturers?
Right.
Or are you focused more on the distribution? As you said, coupons that went out to certain doctors and pushing certain things during certain times.
Right. So most of the misrepresentations, the affirmative misrepresentations here were made by the manufacturers. So the manufacturers are really on hook for like cuts of claims. And the distributors have, we have separate claims against them as well, but I would say that most of the affirmative misrepresentations, the advertising claims are against the manufacturers. So we have that all separated out on our claim, which we have drafted right down.
Okay. And my last question is, in terms of the litigation that you brought on behalf of other cities or other firms that have brought litigation using, utilizing a single-city approach as you're doing, have any of them resolved or have any of them gone?
No. This is really the beginning of litigation. There's a state part litigation here in Connecticut, then there's a federal litigation which is called the whole high district litigation. And that's in the northern district of Ohio. So we, our approach is to keep the cases here in our best case. That's really what we want to do. We think that these cases belong before our juries.
And then nationally, has this approach worked in terms of doing both? How?
Yes. There are two different, two different pressure points and avenues.
Do you have a metric that the city can use for determining the future costs?
Like an algorithm?
Yeah.
No, not, not yet. Once we meet with the city and sort of figure out what departments to meet with, that will, that will give us a starting point and then we can kind of build from there. Maybe over time we'll sort of perfect that, but not yet.
Thank you. What's the name of your firm?
Sure, Ventura Law.
This is at no cost to the city, obviously. Is that right? Okay.
Correct. We front the expenses and we afford the risk. If we, if you, if the city wins, the expenses will come out at the end, but we, no cost to the city.
Thank you. Any other questions from the Aldermen?
At what point do you want to move forward with anything concerning this? Is this under new business? Would this be under new business?
I would request a motion right now to enter into, to retain Ventura Law firm.
Sure.
Mr. Bocetti? We have a second? Delivo, second? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried, you know, see. Thank you for your, your time. Sheila O'Malley, Economic Development Director.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board of Aldermen. I just want to say if one of, one of the members of this board has to leave early and say, practice free throws, I wouldn't blame them. Would not blame them. Just a quick update on some of our projects. Segment eight, the 21st is slated for the drop-in of the bridge. I shouldn't say drop-in, but the erection of the bridge structure. It's going to come in two pieces and it's looking like it's going to be the 21st at around nine o'clock, but we haven't, we haven't solidified that, that time yet. So just keep that in mind. That's for segment eight, the segment that goes across the Persian Drive. You can see that the bridge is in and they're just moving the heavy, the large equipment to get it erected. Waukele Avenue, the mayor mentioned, our contractor is out there laying pipes and hopefully not causing too much of an inconvenience, but that project is moving along as quickly as the weather will permit. Prindle Avenue is going through a third-party review. There's three layers of reviews for that project. We hope to get that out to bid in July of 2018. The armory, they are out there, our contractors are out there working on the exterior. I can't think of the word. Jared Hean might be able to help me. They are...
Shoring it up.
That's it. Shoring up the exterior of the building. And they'll be completed with those renovations in probably another month. And also, you know, I'll be coming back to this board on, on some ideas about what to do with the armory going forward and some cost estimates on the environmentals and some cost estimates depending on which way we go with that building. Hopefully, everything on the exterior will be completed and then just decide moving forward what we want to do. Not that we have the money at this point in time, but contemplate the future use of that building, best and highest use of that, of that building. I mentioned last month, we're waiting on two grants. One is for opportunity zones and the other is, opportunity zones and the other is a grant for some additional remediation and demolition money. Ansonia Copper and Brass EPA is still out there, hope to be completed by the end of the summer, mid to the end of summer. And 65 Main Street, as the mayor mentioned, we're getting our architect back in this week to give us some better cost estimates for the USDA, which has required those estimates. Public Works will be in, the electricity should be in, on in another week, working with UI on that so that the building doesn't fall into further, I shouldn't say further, but so that the building is powered up and we can get in there and get workers started with the renovations. I think that's about it for now. Does anybody have any questions, concerns? Nothing?
Thank you.
Josh, Dr. Schuer?
Nothing, sir.
Nope, nothing from you. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Martin, Director of Constituent Services.
Yes, thank you. President Bakara, greetings, member of the Board of Aldermen. Couple of items, I think last week I touched upon a little bit about investigating some interest for adoptive spots throughout the city. And basically, companies will come in and represent to take care of a certain island or a little parcels of land around the city, which ultimately frees up Public Works' responsibility to take care of it and allows Public Works to then put manpower elsewhere. The first adoptive spot committed is from the Southern Connecticut Dental Group, breakdown here on Lower Main Street. And they're going to take over the corner of Elm Street and Division Street, coming in from Derby. There's an island right there. They're going to maintain that. So we're putting details together on that in the contract. And in what the benefit of the business is, there's a little signage that's put up there saying, "Adopt the spot maintained by," it'll say, "Southern Connecticut Dental Group." As Mr. Marini was referencing about, we have our second annual Earth Day coming up not a week from this Saturday. Lining up volunteers right now from various organizations throughout the city and residents as well. Last year, we had about 25 people participating. We're expecting about 75-plus this year. A major box retailer is going to, looks like will be donating vests and the trash pickers, which will save the city considerable money to not have to front that expense. Looking at about 20 miles of streets will be targeted. There's 10 streets about a mile long, so they go down one side, come back the other. It's going to be about dozen groups of four or five each. There will be, post-clean-up, we'll have a picnic up at the nature center at the pavilion. And lastly, working on frantically here to put a lot of details together. We've got the big baseball game coming in May 15. It's going to be Sacred Heart University versus Albany, Albany State University?
State University of Albany.
State University of Albany, thank you. And it's going to be a lot of fun. We're expecting some big crowds there, some big things to happen. More details to follow at the next meeting, I guess, and maybe I'll have a lot more details to share on that. Any questions?
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Bishara, controller, I guess.
Did you mention the streets or you just said, like, for the Earth Day?
Yeah, it's a, basically...
Is it a part of town than last year or?
It's, it's expanded from last year. The easiest way to do this is everyone will meet at the Armory and then the groups will just basically, I mean, if you look at a map, you go about a mile from the Armory, treat the streets like an, you know, an artery. You can almost go out to the borders. So we've got a series of streets selected that's going to hit all the trouble spots, basically. And there are a lot of trouble spots and there's neighborhoods that are just very clean, so don't want to put people down those streets.
Mr. Bishara.
Good evening. Couple of quick things, we're working on getting the budget ready. The meeting agenda, I think, has been issued and we'll be working a lot of hours in the next three or four weeks, so hope to see you there. Tablets, I've been working with Don and hopefully we'll have those in a week or two so we can start rolling those out. He's been very helpful in getting the selection and so we should be up and running with that. I'm also looking at getting some additional Wi-Fi access here so that we don't overload the system. So a couple, couple of directions ahead with that. And lastly, I have, I believe you have something about an AFD vehicle. They're looking to get a new fire chief vehicle. They went out to the state bid list and normally I don't really trust anybody, so I always sent out to verify the price and we actually got a lower price from a closer vendor. And so to stay above board, we need to have the board waive section 138, the charter, allow us to waive the bid and award the bid to Loma Blazias. It's a savings, I think, a little over $1,000 for the same identical vehicle that we are looking to get. So just to stay above board, looking to see if we can do that and award the contract to Loma. So we get that in order.
And we need a motion to add this to our agenda as a late communication.
Make that motion.
Secondly, Mr. Philopone. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Make a motion to allow the Board of Aldermen to waive the bid for section 138 for this, for this fire vehicle.
Secondly, by Mr. Yawlin.
And award the bid to Loma Blazias.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried, thank you.
Also, you've got some financial data to put out there, I believe. That go in the boxes, Don, do you know? Or hand it out?
To the Aldermen, in the boxes.
I'd like to thank Chief Eman as well as yourself, Rich, for your...
His work very diligent.
Work on this, thank you.
He did a lot of point work on this.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Lieutenant.
Good evening. First off, Chief couldn't be here today, so he asked me to fill in. A couple of things personnel-wise, we currently have two people in our police academy, one named, both of them in Meriden. We have two additional officers that are in field training, so we're hoping between those that we can get up to some kind of a staff level manageable. We've, our Board of Police Misses approved one of our promotions that just hasn't taken effect yet because we have to back for the manpower, so we're waiting for some of these officers to come up field training. But we expect sometime in May to promote Officer Edwin McGee to sergeant. We are looking for a seat in another academy for candidates that we have, which has had a problem finding a seat. It's a first-come, first-served basis. It's a, uh, first come, first served basis. Um, update on some cases, uh, you may have seen, you may have seen in the paper, it was quietly in the paper and then it was more popular in the paper today, uh, bank robbery that occurred on Division Street, um, a couple days ago, we resulted in an arrest. About 28 hours later, we made the arrest, um, and recovered some of the money. Uh, the suspect is still being held. Um, we put that on our press release, but TMZ apparently got a copy of the arrest warrant and, uh, they ran the story today, so it felt a little more publicity. Um, we also made an arrest in the last week or two on a carjacking attempt that occurred on Howard Avenue about six months ago. The suspect's been in custody on another case, but we're gonna tie him through DNA, phone records, et cetera, so, um, that was about the case that we ate. And, uh, you spoke about, uh, winter mayor, I hope you're right, because winter parking has ended as of the end of March, so barring any, uh, parking bans, I think we'll be good for, um, the, uh, the winter parking. I don't have anything else and I think you're in advance for asking no questions.
Thank you, LT.
Anybody have any question?
Thank you, Lieutenant. Mr. DeLazio, Public Works.
Good evening, Mr. Tyler, Board of Aldman. I'll make my full brief from the United Department.
Can't hear you.
Tree creepers on the road, flowers are coming off. So, wait, we're gonna need some more trees for them. Creeper's out. Kind of leaves, they're taking care of the fields. Fields are looking pretty good. Uh, we've got our dugout with the melanes, got our frame on outside and for the concrete, our building in the dugout. Should've been started earlier, we were at the April, so that storming rain.
Thank you, Mike.
We're looking around, uh, how they park field house. Start the tree, we'll be painting in there. That'll be moving right along, hopefully we get paint and, uh, get some windows in it, we can be filming out next month. That'll be another tactic we're working on. How's it all doing? Got basic repairs, puddles. Sewer backup, we got a couple of those passed, Mark. Other than that, we're pretty, pretty much, uh, normal.
Yes, Mr. Cassetti.
Was, uh, was there a mold or mildew problem up at, uh, Hill Top House?
No. It looked like a sling, did some water damage, I think for one of them, so it's just that whole black, uh...
Residue?
Yeah, so we, we cut four holes in the wall and looked inside with insulation out, there was no water damage that occurred, so we just, we, we rocked it and...
So, that should remedy it, right?
It does, there was no mold, there was no mold at all there.
That was just brought to your attention.
It's more of a fire, uh, question, I just, uh, my team and myself, they said they think there was mold in there. And we're, we're meeting up there, somebody said something, it was, not a truck, it was just, just hope they take care of the ground, so...
Listen.
Cut holes and just the shoulders, there was no mold in there.
Is this in a remote part of the, uh, building or is it like a dominant gathering area?
Meeting room.
It is a meeting room.
For having a meeting.
Okay.
We're, we're probably first helping out, we have to prepare it. Actually, it was sanding there, we painted it, it's, it's a period of, but there was some people chuck the gun sometimes. I know there was no mold in there, it's like before living, there was no painting, there was mold. So, we just cut some holes, people look inside, just make sure they're all happy with it. That's the issue resolved.
Okay, thank you.
Is that, is that relating to the roof issue that they brought to the meeting last week, last month?
No, the roof, the roof's not, the roof actually is still decent shape. I mean, I don't know if it's gonna need one, but there is, it's not, it's not the one, it's an architectural shingle, but it's not a three-pack system or old, I mean, that's fallen off and maybe it's not needed. Some people like, uh, you, you know, we fix what needs to be done, because other things have to be done, that are, we can like City Hall, we can, we get the roof on the backside of the roof, so that, that's leaking, that's, that's important right now.
You guys went and checked it out?
Yeah, it's all checked out, so, and that's the part of the problem, I thought it was legal, legal to a window. People get behind the, excuse me, a hole in the panel, so the voice to stay behind the panel, which, after rock, it does mold, but it's size of mold. Like I said, there's a lot of open, open hands on and, uh, our budget's not as big as it should be, so we take care of the problem as we occur.
Very wise. Thank you, Mike.
I have three quick questions, all pertaining to Ward Six. The road down, going down Prindle to Platt where it ice is over, broken pipe, um, was any, that was all taken care of with the state? Okay. And then on Prindle Avenue, you head towards Derby or come from Derby, towards Prindle? We have that big orange, yeah, so...
That's the, that's the, that's the asphalt plant, it's just open two days ago. Finally got asphalt.
Gotcha.
Yesterday, it was in progress, it was in hatches, so that's, that's under the...
Okay, and thank you. And, and the third and final question is at Highland Avenue where it comes out onto Hill Street, we all know that's a tough area for people to pull out of. Um, and I understand that there was or was consideration for a big mirror on a telephone pole across the street from there so that people coming out of Highland can see down the street and up the street, because either way it's pretty tough. And I didn't know if that was indeed something that was there and got knocked off or...
I do remember my mirror, but it might not be a bad idea, maybe. I'll look into that. You know, you signed a poll, but when you do pull off there, you look good.
It'd be gone about 65 miles an hour coming out.
Yeah, you have to, like, merge your eyes.
You're right. You might have a smaller, larger number, 50 years.
But even like, I mean, I know mostly everybody in Ansonia knows that that's tough, but if there's a sign we could put up that says, "Hey, you know, blind, blind drive" or something, just so, and a mirror, I think it would help on both sides. Because I know there's a bad accident there like, what, three months ago?
Get some of those prayer panels put on this.
Okay, that, that's great and, and thank you for all your hard work and your team this winter. Great job. Thank you.
I just wanted to say thank you for getting the fields ready, I know you and Sean worked very hard on getting stuff, so really appreciate it. Before the snow, we would've been outside, been able to practice outside for the first time for a little week, so, thanks.
Thanks, Mike. Finance Committee report. Mr. DeLebro.
I'd like to make a motion to pay all bills if found to be correct and accurate.
Seconded by Mr. Blackwell. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried? Thank you. Uh, Arms Committee. Mr. Blackwell.
For the month of March, Arms responded 270 calls for service. Um, they also provided 27 calls for service to other, uh, surrounding towns for mutual aid and in turn, Ansonia received three, uh, three assists from surrounding towns for mutual aid. The income for that month was, if I can read this correctly, $63,145 and 62 cents. Um, and then I believe there is a communication, um, that I hope the board considers that went through the Salary Committee, I believe this is communication number two, if we could just keep that in mind for when that comes up. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Fire Commission. Mr. Schuer.
Uh, Department report for, uh, March 2018. Uh, Fire Department responded to 61 calls for the month, uh, highlighted by 16 motor vehicle assists, 16 electrical hazards, three structured fires, and the Fire Marshal additionally conducted three investigations. And that's, uh, stamp it, the, the 61 calls was significantly up from the average of the last six months in terms of the number of calls. That's it.
Thank you. Um, Steve, anything for ordinance tonight? Nope, okay. Mr. Cassetti, Housing Committee, Housing Authority?
Uh, nothing going on there.
Okay. Very good.
You'll see in executive session, we've got something coming up.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Phil, phone.
Uh, as far as salaries, as Mr. Blackwell said, Arms' salary, that is my meeting the other day, there's a communication on that. And then Technology Committee, as Mr. Bishara said, we have it to come soon.
Thank you. Municipal reports. Yes, Mr. DeLebro.
I'd like to make, uh, make a motion to approve all vote recommendations.
Sir, second. Mr. Blackwell, second. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Thank you, motion carried. Controller approvals. Motion to, uh, accept Controller approvals. Mr. Yaman, seconded by Mr. Book, Mr. DeLebro. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. Uh, Mr. Marini already gave us a little report on the land use, uh, report, but if anyone wants to, like, mention that for the record, we could...
Twenty-two light investigations in March, uh, potential building inspections, 63 active cases, and I just communicated, uh, since January, uh, Department's taken over over $300,000. It would be nice.
Thank you.
Very nice.
Good job. Communication number one. It's from, actually, I'll, it's from me regarding, yes.
Tax collector refunds.
Oh, I'm sorry, tax collector refunds.
Motion to approve if found to be appropriate. I'll second the motion.
Second. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Thank you, motion carried. Accidents and claims.
I'd like to, uh, refer both, I think claim number one and, uh, refer claim number two to whoever's...
Seconded by Mr. Rivers. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. Communication number one. That communication is from myself regarding, um, the, um, it's the amended one actually, pursuant to Connecticut General Statute, Chapter 164, Section 10-40, "The legislative body of a city shall appoint five members to the School Regionalization Committee." Those members are, anybody want to make the motion for that? Mr. Cassetti?
Yes, I make a motion to, uh, mention the five members that are being nominated as Lori Bacaral, Josh Schuer, Tracy DeLebro.
No, that's the amended one.
That's the amended one?
You're reading the wrong one.
Doesn't look like it. Yeah, it's that one. Okay. Yeah, uh, as I said before, the nominations of Lori Bacaral, Joseph Jawman, or Yaman, I'm sorry, Tracy DeLebro, John Izzo, Steve Adamowski.
Seconded by Mr. DeLebro. Any discussion? Yes, Mr. Bryant.
Lori Bacaral, thank you. The, um, the process for this, um, I'm, I'm sorry, but I'm only familiar with four names on this list, but the fifth member, I'm assuming is, uh, the member from the public that was selected, and I just didn't, uh, I wasn't aware of the process involved for selecting the committee, um, if there was one at all, uh, for that. I'm pretty sure the motion will be carried, but I probably have to abstain for not having any further information.
Did you have a nomination you wanted to put in?
Uh, no, I, well, um, it's, it's not a matter of that, it's just making an informed decision really about the, the fifth member who I, I'm not familiar with, so I just didn't know about the process for that.
He has a background in education, um, anybody want to speak to...
He was the former superintendent of Cincinnati, Ohio. He's the current superintendent of schools for Norwalk. Um, there's a few other schools in between, but notably Cincinnati and Norwalk. Um, he has a wealth of information and knowledge about how school systems operate and, uh, I think he'll be a real asset to the committee. I hope that you, uh, will consider him.
Okay, thank you, appreciate that.
He's a strong candidate for, uh, regionalization.
We have a motion on the floor in a second. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? I will, I will abstain from my nomination. Thank you, Mr. Yaman. Motion carried unanimously. Communication number two.
So, uh, salaries and Arms had a meeting the other day, um, discussing the potential raises for their part-time employees. Um, there it is. The proposal is for the next three years, um, and this particularly applies to the part-time drivers, supervisor they have, and then full-time supervisor positions. Um, and then, uh, Jared goes into various, um, step increases for each employee as they, uh, they continue their service with the Arms Committee, or Arms, uh...
Increases.
Yeah, increases, and this would hopefully take effect April 14th. I can speak to how hard the Arms, they work for this city, um, and we all thank you very much for the, the work that you guys do and, um, I would love to, to help out in any But at this time, I, I want to refer this over to Finance, prefer the discussion and see if we can help our guys out.
Got a motion? Motion, seconded by Mr. Yaman. Any discussion?
What's the motion for? To table it, basically?
To refer to Finance, refer to discussion.
Okay. To the, uh, the future?
A future date.
Future date.
Yes. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Thank you. Um, resolutions. I'll read it. Initiation of Charter Revision Commission. Wherefore the Ansonia Board of Aldman recognizes the importance of reviewing the city charter for the purpose of modernizing city government and achieving cost-saving efficiencies hereby be resolved pursuant to Connecticut General Statute, Section 7-188 and 7-190, the process of charter revision be initiated and a charter revision commission be appointed. Let it further be resolved that the Ansonia Board of Aldman recommends the Charter Revision Commission to consider the following revisions to the charter. One, review the city charter and make recommendations to promote the efficiency and effectiveness of city government, and two, identify opportunities for reducing bureaucracy and increasing accountability to the public. Air motion to approve charter revision? Mr. Cassetti, yes?
I make the motion.
Seconded by Mr. Rivers. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Oh, Mr. Schuer, yes.
Does this mean any names on it or...
Yes, it's in the mayor's letter to come up.
No, 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 I mean, like, does it have to be introduced by anybody or could just be general like that?
Yes. That's it.
Yes, it can be?
Yep.
Okay. That's it.
Motion on the floor, any discussion further? All, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carried unanimously. We have one resignation from, uh, Mr. Kenneth Glavnicki, stepping off the Board of Public Works as chairman. Mr. Schuer.
Motion to, uh, accept the resignation and, uh, Kevin will send a nice letter, thanks. For service.
Thank you. And yes, Mr. Bryant.
I'll second.
Okay, second, okay. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Appointments. Mayor, Mayor Cassetti's letter dated April 5th. Regarding charter revision. Um, there's five names on there. If you want to do them collectively or individually, it's your, your, um, pleasure, gentlemen.
Make a motion to do it collectively. Second.
Mr. Cassetti makes a motion, seconded by Mr. DeLebro. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay.
Ready to go? You need the names?
There's, there's no public session right now. Yes, I do.
Okay, uh, for charter revision, it'd be Lori Bacaral, Dominico Philippone, Robert Knott, Sharon Vashar, Varosak, I'm sorry, and Robert McDowell.
Any discussion, gentlemen? Motion to the second, right? Okay. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? One abstention, myself? And Mr. Philippone, both abstained. Thank you.
I'll make the most real point, Chicago worries the answer.
You will. Any second. Mr. Schuer, second. Any discussion on Mr. Rivers' appointment to, uh...
Sketching.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, Mr. Rivers. Thank you. Any new business, gentlemen? New business? Any old business? Okay. Bring just to executive session. Mr. Marini.
I'm Mayor Cassetti, uh, Richard Bashara, Sheila O'Malley.
Okay, motion to, motion to-
Move to the executive session.
Seconded by Mr. DeLibro. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Executive session?
Okay.
Yes. I'm in a break, please.
That's lunchtime.
That's my turn.
That's the law.
Right, I know it. I know it.